Okay, let's go ahead and call to order tonight's meeting for Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, April 7, 2015. If everyone would please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this evening... Okay, we'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Commissioner Brennan?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Furby?
Commissioner Stievel?
Here.
Commissioner Seaton?
Here. And next, we have approval of this evening's agenda. Did anyone have any changes? Have you had a chance to look it over?
Move for approval.
I second you.
All in favor of approval of the agenda for this evening? Aye. Okay. Agenda is approved. And then, for the minutes from Tuesday, March 3rd, did you all have a chance to look those over?
Yes.
Any changes, adjustments, questions on those?
I move to approve minutes for last meeting.
The second.
We have a second already, and so, all in favor of approving the minutes from last month? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All opposed? Okay. We don't have any old business. This evening... I'm going to make glasses. This evening, we do have a public hearing, and for those of you in the audience, if you've not been here, let me just explain how the process works. We will have one of the ladies here from the city will go ahead and present the case first, and then, we hear from applicants, and then, we can hear from anyone who wants to speak in favor or opposed to the request. If you are going to be speaking tonight, you do need to be sworn in. If you get sworn in, you don't have to speak, but you do have to be sworn in if you think you might speak. So, anybody who wants to present this evening, if you would come up to the podium to be sworn in.
Use your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye?
Aye.
State your name.
Chelsea.
Brian McNamara.
Do you solemnly swear?
Solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give
That the testimony I am about to give
will be the truth?
Will be the truth.
The whole truth?
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
And nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
Okay, thank you. And has anyone of the commissioners had any ex parte conversations regarding tonight's hearing?
No.
No.
I haven't met these people.
Okay. All right. So, this evening, we have a CU-15-02, a request for a conditional use permit to allow a coffee roasting business in a commercial district. Currently, this use is allowed in the commercial district only with the conditional use permit according to the Land Use Code Table 3.2. The property is addressed as 1901 and 1/2 Highway 180 West, Silver City, New Mexico. The applicants are owners of the business, Brian McNamara and Chelsea Vaughn. I hope I pronounced those right. Okay, thank you. And then, if someone would like to go ahead from Ms. M. Dick?
Yes.
Good evening.
You've just read the case, so I won't repeat that for you. According to Table 3.2 of the Town and Silver City Land Use Code, manufacturing and production, indoor and outdoor operations with or without outdoor storage are conditional use in the commercial district. And where this comes into play for this case, they will be having more than a coffee shop. They will actually be roasting their beans on site, and they hope to grow their manufacturing business of the roasted beans. So, that is one of their main goals of the business, and they will also be selling drinks by the cup to go, and you can buy the beans in bags also. So, that's where the conditional use was triggered in this case. It's not just your regular, go buy a cup of coffee shop and leave. You can buy the beans by the pound.
Pound, correct?
Yes. So, this location, it works out for them very well because it was previously designed as a drive-through coffee shop. So, all of the stacking spaces and everything were already in place. The inside was prepared for a coffee shop. Their roaster is very small, which they will explain the details of that to you. They're interested in increasing the production of their roasted coffee beans for sale, whole or ground. So, with this conditional use, they will be allowed to have one of their main purposes of the business as the wholesale coffee or retail coffee sales of their own product that they're producing on site. This is a picture. Let me turn the lights out for you. If you're not familiar with the location, this is the stand that exists there. This is not what they're using. That is part of their landlord's building that he occupies. And this is the closest business other than their landlord to the north of the property, and it's Griffin's Propane. And they were notified of the conditional use, as well as all the neighbors within 300 The Planning and Zoning Commission in approving a conditional use permit shall make the following findings and may attach to the permit such reasonable requirements in addition to those specified in this land use code to ensure that the development in its proposed location will not endanger the public health or safety, will not injure the value of adjoining our nearby properties, will be in harmony with the area in which it's located, and will be in conformity with the town's comprehensive plan or other plans officially adopted by the town. And one of the reasons manufacturing is a conditional use in these areas is because of the effect on the neighboring properties. And one of the questions that came up with this business in particular was the aroma of roasting coffee beans, and a lot of people don't like the smell. And so, the applicants can show you their equipment. They have all that detailed out for you, to show you the exhausting exhaust system. And they've also brought some samples that you can smell of the roasted and the green beans. Not green beans, green coffee beans. Community Development Department staff recommends approval of this request as it meets all four required findings, and we don't see a reason for any conditions on our end, although you are allowed to add reasonable conditions when you make the motion to approve, or you may choose to deny it. And if you don't have any further, any questions for me, the applicants have a slideshow too, so when you're done with your questions for me, we'll switch it over.
Can you show the slides?
Sure. And there's also a site plan included in your packet with the ingress and egress detail.
So, refresh my memory. This, we do this conditional use permit, this goes with the business and not with the property? Is that how that works?
It goes with the address. So, if they outgrow this, depending on where they move, an industrial zone is the only place they can do it without a conditional use. So, it would depend on the growth of their business.
And I'm guessing the landlord, I mean, nowhere in here doesn't say who the landlord is or anything. I'm assuming it's...
There's a letter in your packet from him, Mr. Minus. It's right with your application.
Oh, there it is. Sorry, I don't know how I missed that. Thank you.
Yes, so, he has a consent letter included in your packet.
And I have one question there, ask you. For a certain size of coffee grinder, which I think is next to the, or coffee roaster, which I think is next to the lowest size, is there capacity for that space to go up in size?
That would be a question for the applicants.
Okay.
I'm sure the ins and outs of their products they use, so that would be a great question for them.
Okay. I'm looking, where is Ranch Club Road? You know the name, and I can't place it.
Memory Lane.
Oh, Memory Lane.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And I'm looking at your map, and access is from both? Or just, which one's 180 here on the map, on the picture that we have?
If you'd like to have the applicant come up to the podium, they can show you exactly if you have questions about that now.
Okay.
Who wants to go bottom? Is it 180?
Yes, the 180 is right here where the writing is.
Okay. And so, access is not on 180, your access is on Ranch Club Road then?
Mostly, yes.
Okay. Okay. I guess if the applicants want, are you going to have any other questions first or...
Yes, or a slide you'd like to see of my presentation before they put theirs up?
Yes.
They do, today. A lot of times, the applicants don't, but they do today.
Okay.
Let me go up to the computer and press exit. Hold on.
Okay. And if you would, when you go to speak, if you would just introduce yourself, and remember to speak into the mic.
All right. Hi, everybody. I am Brian, and this is Chelsea, and our company is called Bean Vivant. We moved here a few months ago, and we're excited to share our passion for coffee with Silver City.
We're going to give you a brief presentation tonight about our company, the roaster specs, and future potential scenarios.
Our concept is to be a coffee roast house where we select and roast exotic premium coffees to sell bagged or brewed. We are fans of reducing plastic waste, and therefore, we use paper or compostable PLA alternatives instead. We also offer discounts to those who bring their own bags for beans or cups for coffee. All of our beans are sourced from quality-oriented small growers instead of factory-farmed commodity sources, and the idea with roasting in-house is freshness. Although green coffee has a shelf life of up to one year under ideal conditions before its quality fades, roasted coffee is much more chemically active and really shines when consumed within two weeks of roasting.
All right. So, this is our coffee roaster. It's an Ambeq YM2 drum roaster with a capacity of 2 kilograms, which is about 5 pounds. Really, in the world of commercial coffee roasting, this is a baby machine. It's only a few pounds higher in capacity than a home roaster, which usually get up to about a pound at the top. It's not uncommon to see in-store, in café, a coffee roaster up to 20 or 24 kilograms. That is far below where air quality control starts to get into play, which is up around 60 kilograms. So, while 24 kilograms seems much larger than our machine, it's still considered a small production roaster. Those are, that's the heat spec and the fan. Now, we know there is some concern regarding smell and noise, so we wanted to make sure we address that here. With regards to smell, coffee roasting, in our opinion, is kind of a magical process. We have some green beans here, if you'd like to check them out. We know it's, not everybody has a chance to see a green coffee bean. They smell a little bit to me like chocolate-covered hay, their very unique thing. Once you put them in the roaster, they transition over the course of the roast from hay or popcorn to eventually caramelized and chocolate, and maybe a nutty kind of flavor, but somewhere in the middle, it really predominates as baking bread. And we tested this by sticking our exhaust found direct fan, our exhaust outlet directly out a window, stepping outside in the fan air, and trying to smell it, and that's when we could detect hay and baking bread. With our full exhaust system in place, which you can see behind the roaster in that picture, the smell is imperceptible, which is a little disappointing since we enjoy it, but basically, outside of our roast shack, you can't smell anything. With regards to sound, our roaster is a little bit like a household vacuum cleaner on steroids. It's a large fan noise. When you drop the beans from the hopper into the drum, it kind of sounds like a maraca, and then it fades as it goes into the deeper stages of the roast.
Looking to the future, we may wish to upgrade to a larger capacity roaster, something between 5 and 15 kilograms maybe, assuming we have enough room for the clearance of the machine in that small building. Also, we look forward to holding cupping events, which are a fun way to taste different coffee side by side and develop one's palate. Here on our shirts is a taste wheel for coffee cupping. As you can see, there are some, well, you probably can't see from here, but there's some pretty wild descriptors of different foods and fruits and stuff on it. Ultimate, and you kind of have to experience it to believe that this can be in coffee, but... And ultimately, we would like to travel to develop direct relationships with exceptional coffee farms. Also, you'll notice this picture to the right with a larger 20-kilogram shop roaster built into a café. We visited this roastery in Scottsdale and learned that they've been roasting in a crowded downtown plaza for 17 years without issue. Our roaster is a tenth of that capacity, so we feel that there's plenty of room for growth.
Before we address the four concerns for the conditional use permit, we'd just like to leave you with a great quote. It's by Jabez Burns, a famous coffee roaster, as written from the spice mill. "You do not give to pepper or ginger or cinnamon or cloves strength or quality, pungency or aroma, but coffee you develop, and by skill and judgment change from caterpillar to butterfly. You bring out hidden treasure." So, that is everything we have about our company and our roaster, and we'll just address the four concerns. With regards to endangering public health or safety, we have done everything required by the Fire Marshal and Health Environmental Department with regards to our roaster to make sure that it is safe, it is legal. I actually am behind the roaster a lot, and I bump the exhaust chute frequently, and I don't get burnt or anything. So, for a public member to be hurt by our roaster or our café or operation seems pretty unlikely unless they speed in the drive-through and do something unwise. In terms of the value of the properties around us, it's a commercial location. There are a bunch of businesses. We're not super close to anybody should we one day produce great aroma at a time, and we actually think it's quite an asset to add a fresh coffee roaster to the area because there is nothing like that.
And by following the procedures to seek the conditional use permit, I guess we are in compliance with the town's comprehensive plan.
Are there any questions?
I have a couple. Is, are there any side chemical products to the roasting, or is it just the beans and what is the...
It's just the beans. It's really, the whole art of coffee roasting is modulating the roast with temperature, time, heat, and raw beans, and you can, would you like me to bring you stuff there? But other than that, there's, there's nothing added. Some big commodity farms, the roasters may add flavors if they can use a little bit of coffee. We choose to source coffees to have a natural taste like you find on a real. So, that's the roaster that the clown in, and this is the green beans. We walk on the handle of the green.
Smell looks good.
No, the green are much heavier. They're particled.
And I have just one question. From what I understand, air quality and particulates, because the smoke does contain particulates, but it's up to a much, much larger capacity than anything you showed
Yes.
that you would be looking at going towards.
Right. Air quality regulations really kick in around 60 kilograms when it comes to coffee roasting, and we, if we ever grew, when we grow, because that's always the hope, it would probably be into a 5 to 15 kilogram machine, and if there was ever a concern in the future, there are steps you can take to, to...
To mitigate
Yeah, to mitigate.
anything that comes out of it.
But there's, at this stage, we haven't seen any kind of issue with our machine.
And if they were to move to industrial zone, because they had grown, it would automatically just follow, they wouldn't have to come in for front of us again if they increased their size?
Not before you, but they would still come to our department, and they would still, if there were EPA requirements. Do you remember the hearing with the powder coat shops that they had to comply with EPA? That would go through our office for their business registration.
Okay. Can you tell me that there is no access on 180?
No.
Or do you have to go in by the brew, whatever that's called?
We do have to go in on Ranch Club Road. 180, which is a 62 grade, there's no access to 180, and it blocked off the road that was previously connected to a pizza shop.
So, you do have to come in on Ranch Club Road?
Yeah, and it's also, it's kind of like a great big access point from the stoplight down to the building.
It would be nice if it did come off of 180, and you could just kind of like drive through. It would be a much smoother flow. It's too bad they blocked all that off, but...
It's messy.
Yeah. Also, when you, when you put a batch in, how long is the roasting process in your smaller...
Uh, yeah, sure.
All right, I'll go back to the mic though, so you can hear. I can make you imagine where...
So, our machine has a capacity of 5 pounds, and if you load it up with its full capacity, it produces a certain time profile that's required to roast everything. The ideal range is actually 3 and 1/2 to 4, maybe 4 and 1/2 pounds, and with us striving for medium roast that preserves kind of all these characteristics, the average roast falls between 11 and 15 minutes. You can go beyond that. You can take your roast at 20 minutes or further, but it becomes baked instead of roasted.
And will you be doing all of your roasting during business hours Monday through Friday or on weekends? How will that work?
We are not yet sure. Just kind of feeling that out.
We're not sure of like how much attention each of us will be needed at the window versus the roaster, so we're gonna see what we need to do.
What will be your hours of operation for people to come in and get coffee? Would just...
We're looking at Monday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Can you look up the picture of the site again, or...
Was it on theirs or mine?
Yours.
Okay.
But if it's on theirs too, that's fine.
The bottom left. Yes. Fourth line.
Okay. Is it all drive-through, or will people also be able to come in?
All drive-through.
All drive-through, okay.
All, all drive-through.
And at the moment, it would be obviously just the two of you, but if you expand down the road, there may be employees if you were to move and expand?
Yes.
Yes, but probably only two people at a time inside there for efficiency reasons.
So, that will be the front is the drive-through and the roasting house?
Yes.
And how big is it?
The bump out to the left, you can see like the left of the window, contains the roaster, and then we have a straight chute from the window back. It's about 250 square feet.
Okay. And so, when you have these cupping events, where are you going to have those?
That's, that's a good question. Not, not in there, I don't think.
We've talked about, you know, presentations of the co-op. Someone mentioned that they're open to educational events, and we'd love to, to work with local cafes and help them source fresh beans, because we know the nearest roaster other than the Monks is down Los Cruces, and hopefully, through those kind of partnerships, it'd be a good platform for people to come in to a place that already has seats and a public setting and do a cupping event.
Is there the possibility for you to do these things outside during the warmer months?
As long as it's not super windy, I guess it would work, but you, you get your nose really, really close to the cup to smell it, and it can be kind of a messy thing, so if there's wind that blows the coffee off your spoon, it just might not be...
Well, what I meant was more maybe that for you to answer, would it be possible for them to do things outside?
I'm not sure. They have to roast inside. It's, and then, I think that would be more of a question for the Health Department. The town does special events, if they'd like to have one onsite or off-premise, so it would just depend, but at the time, they haven't asked. But that, that would be a special event permit or something of that nature. And their roaster has to be inside, right?
Yeah, yes.
So, the roaster would stay in there or whatever premise they're occupying, because it has a special venting and hood, right? With the Fire Marshal?
It has a special exhaust pipe?
Yeah.
And a, it does work without that. That's how we are roasting to test for the smell, but it's not easy to transport.
Right. So, it is there.
Much preferred to diesel smoke, which there's plenty of at that corner.
So, when are you envisioning being open?
As soon as our next load of green beans arrive, which should be a week to two maybe.
Oh, wow.
Everything's all set. We just have to get the beans in.
Will you be doing any organic? Would you like to ask?
Yeah, that, that would be part of the menu.
Does it call, if I'd be a good venue for you? Yeah. I did notice, although you've mentioned it a couple of times, that the Fire Department or someone from the Health Department has looked at this. That's the only thing other question I have remaining.
To get a business registration with the town that's serving food, they have to sign the form that they've checked at the Health Department and met all their requirements, and you will see in your packet that the Fire Marshal signed off on it on the staff report. And then, the next step for them, once this happens, is they will come in for their business license, and the Fire Marshal will sign off again. But I believe he's already done your inspection, correct?
You excuse me, by for an initial inspection, but I don't know if you've seen the exhaust in place.
Okay. So, when they get their business registration, the Fire Marshal will go by again, and it's in the analysis section of the staff report?
I just found the...
Yes, yes, ma'am. He had no comment at this time. And that's part of the business registration that anybody opening a business would have to meet. And the application, when they sign it, says that they've consulted all state agencies that they need to, and they're aware of the requirements. And then, the Fire Marshal will do their final inspection.
Thank you. Other questions? Well, first, I wanted to say thank you for being so thorough. You're probably the most thorough applicant we've had in a year or more, maybe more.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much for that. And just a comment on my end. If, if we'd had neighbors who had concerns, it would be one thing, but I mean, they're not even, you can see the area. We all know kind of the Griffin's Propane and all that, and nobody seemed to have any response and concern, and so, I personally agree that it meets all the findings, and I don't see any issues with it. Does anybody else want to comment?
No, I think we should vote in motion.
Commissioner Seaton. You guys go ahead and sit if you'd like. Thank you very much. And welcome to Silver. I move to approve a request for a conditional use permit to allow a coffee roasting business in the commercial district. That is CU-15-02. Currently, this use is allowed in the commercial district only with a conditional use permit according to the Land Co. Use Table 3.2. The property is addressed as 1901 and 1/2 Highway 180 West in Silver City, New Mexico, and the applicants are the owners of the business, Brian McNamara and Chelsea Vaughn.
Say on the motion.
I guess we don't probably need any discussion, so if we could call for a vote?
Hey, wait a second. What if I want to discuss?
Oh, would anybody care to discuss?
Not really.
Okay. Very nice presentation. Uh, aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Stievel?
Aye.
Commissioner Seaton?
Aye.
Okay. Wonderful. But we're good to go. Thank you very much. Welcome to Silver, and I hope that your business takes off and you're able to expand. That would be nice. Very nice. Can you, for a few minutes, if we have any other questions for you? You know, like legal questions, but...
Flavors. Yeah.
Okay. And I don't think we have, we have no new business, no community forum. Do we have any reports from staff?
Yes, ma'am. Next month, the item on our agenda will be land use code revisions, so that will be initiated by our department. Mr. Marshall has taken over our department since last week, and so, that'll be one of the first things that we're doing with him at the helm.
Are these revisions that have already been worked through?
Yes. They're, we've worked on them, and there, a lot of them are very minor. They're not a large revision. So, there are things that over time have come up that we need to add, the vehicle sales, that kind of thing
Okay.
that have come up from cases, and a couple of things that don't coordinate from one section to the other. So, they're very minor changes.
Okay.
And we'll have those posted on the town website for everybody to view, since there aren't any neighbors within 300 feet. So, if anybody would like to look at them, we will have them up on the website once we get the public notice up, so that everybody has a chance to comment and have input.
And we have zoning changes coming down the pipe too, correct? Don't we have, were zone changes coming down the pipe too, correct?
No one's applied. We do have a conditional use for June.
Okay. No, it's like, don't we have zone changes still that we have, that we had looked at?
That probably will be later in the year once Mr. Marshall has a little more time to settle in.
Okay.
So that should come up maybe late summer.
Okay.
Thank you.
So does this mean that Mr. Russell's retired now?
His last official day was April 1st, but he'll be in and out a little bit here and there until the end of June. But he's pretty much retired.
He didn't even come to CS before, before he quit?
What the heck?
We didn't, he didn't even want a party. He was very low-key.
Let's have a party.
Well, I'd like to say that we really have appreciated it. I really, really appreciate his thoroughness over the time I've been on the commission. It's made a world of difference. So sorry to see him retiring, but happy for him.
I'm trying to convince him to apply after he comes back from his trips he has scheduled. So he may be a fellow commissioner in a year or so.
Commissioner Russell.
Okay.
He could always have the town council.
Anything else from staff?
Uh, that's it.
And any reports from the commission?
Some very interesting conversations with people about billboards. So there's more on that to come, I guess.
Prologues, right?
Well, just inconsistent policy on billboards. The more you talk about these things, the more people seem to notice them. So it's been interesting.
Anything else? I'll entertain a, oh, do we have any community input?
I have a couple of community, just general announcements. We have the Continental Divide formal kickoff, I believe, which is on the 11th and the 12th, mostly in downtown, the historic district. And then Thursday, which will be at the park again, is the 18th. It'll be from Saturday.
Also, on community, the bike races, they're still really looking for people willing to do housing. So anybody who's willing to do housing, Josh, who works at Sisugi, is in charge of that. And he's still struggling to find people. So anyone who'd be willing to, a couch is even good for a lot of them. So please, open your doors if you can. Anything else?
Very excited about the new newspaper that's coming out on the 23rd of December.
What's that?
The Independent.
Oh, I don't know that.
Yeah, nobody knows that. It's exciting. I'm not going to do a whole commercial here for another reason than it'd make cats hate me, so...
Okay.
We'll be watching for the newspaper. All right.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Excellent. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.